We're recording.
Excellent.
I'm live.
Fantastic. Good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock and welcome to the Newbury Port zoning board of appeals meeting for May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two via Zoom. My name is Mark Moore, Vice Chair, calling the meeting to order as our Chairman Rob Chimpetti can't be here tonight. Give it a few minutes or a few seconds, I should say, to populate other attendees. And then we will proceed with a couple more introductions and then making sure we have a quorum for tonight's meeting. As always, we may have our city plan director Andy Port, but I know we have city planner Kate Sullivan handling presentations and attendee participation. And before we start, we always like to recognize our note taker Gretchen Joy for her dedicated efforts. Make it this time, I will start with the roll call introduction of the board to verify that we have a proper form. As I mentioned earlier, I'm Mark Moore, Vice Chair, obviously in attendance with Rob Chan petty absent. As I introduce each member now, at last each please respond with here or present. I'm gonna roll the dice and start with Secretary Stephen Delisle. While we search for Stephen, I will move on to member Ken Swan.
I'm here.
Excellent. Member Bled Shagnon.
Here.
Associate Member Greg Bennett.
Here.
And I'll stall a bit longer and is Secretary Stephen Delisle with us yet?
I just saw him.
Excellent. Let me know when you pull him in and I'll. Okay, his lovely response.
All right, he is in.
Mr. Delia, would you please announce your presence on the board this evening?
Here.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Okay, with five members present, we do have a legal corpsman can now proceed with the meeting with all members in attendance voting tonight. For those new to the zoning board of appeals meeting and or new to the Zoom format, we find it helpful to describe how the meeting will flow. I don't have this memorized like the chair does, so I always read through this. Please bear with me. With a roll call completed, we'll soon move on to the public hearings. I'll start by reading a description of the public notice to identify the application to be presented. I then asked for the applicant to present the details and salient points of their application and proposed changes. Often it's the applicant's legal counsel or the applicant's architect that will present and describe the proposed changes to the property. Once the presentation is complete, we will then proceed to the cornerstone of the public hearing, the board will hear public comment. Although still virtual, the public comment portion of the hearing entails asking any resident attendee wishing to comment to come forward and be heard. I'll ask anyone in virtual attendance who wishes to be heard to raise their hand electronically utilizing the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. Caitlin Sullivan, or I will announce those that are recognized to speak since I'm running the meeting, it will definitely be Caitlin. Please remember to unmute yourself before you start and to clearly provide your name and address for the record. Try to keep your comments succinct and to the point so others who wish to comment can do so efficiently. We do have a two minute limit to comments. But can allow leeway if needed at the discretion of the chair while commenting, feel free to state questions you may have for the record. But please allow the board to fulfill their role in eliciting additional detail in the questions from the board portion of the hearing. Public comments are not intended to be a Q and A session between attendees and the applicant. Thanks for your understanding on that. We will proceed with public comment until all raised hands are exhausted and all who wish to be heard are heard. Once all public comments have been heard, that portion of the hangings closed and we move on to questions from the board. The board often inspired by the public comments and questions will then ask the applicant or applicants reps for any additional detail needed in their decision making process. When the board is exhausted, they're questioning, I'll close that portion of the hearing and move on to deliberations. In the public forum, this is another key feature of the public hearing format. Everything the board discusses about the application is done in public or virtual public. So that all in attendance get to hear the thoughts and discussions of each member and of the board as a whole as it moves towards its collective decision. During the process, it sometimes becomes evident that the board feels it needs more information or that the board is leaning in opposition of the application. The board then may move to continue the application until it can contain obtain the desired information from the applicant. Alternately, if a denial of the application is looking like a possible outcome, the board often gives the applicant the opportunity to request a continuance to address the board's concerns. At a future date at a future public hearing before the deliberations close and the board proceeds to a formal vote. A formal vote to deny an application has consequences for the applicant with respect to timing and costs. So the board would prefer that an application is fine tuned whenever possible versus just outright denied. Once the liberation is a complete and no continuance has been sought, I will then encourage a motion from the board. And when seconded, I will call for a vote on the motion. Because we use a form of Robert's Rules of Order. You will hear a motion on the application made in the affirmative or to approve, even if the board member making the motion plans to deny. With a minimum of four votes in the affirmative emotion or application is approved, I'll then close that application and move to the next hearing on the agenda. Applying all the same rules when the applications on the agenda are heard and addressed. I will close the public hearings portion of tonight's agenda and the board then engages in business meeting to approve the minutes from our last meeting and address any items appropriate to that form. With that explained, without further ado, will now proceed for our public hearings tonight, starting with a continuance request. This is our first public hearing tonight is for one ninety-three High Street. Hebbelenak Real Estate LLC care of Lisa Mead, me Talim and Costa. There has been a request to continue this appeal of notice of violation from zoning enforcement officer dated five sixteen nineteen. The request to continue has been the date requested has been November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. And does the applicant wish to be heard on this?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Sorry, attorney, excuse me, Mr. Moore, just I'd like to recuse myself from this matter.
Oh, okay. Very well.
Sorry about that, Mr. Delile. Matt, Mr. Chair, unless anybody has any questions, I think in our cover letter, we stated that the trial just got over a couple of weeks ago. The briefing deadline is not for another thirty days. I think I don't have that date exactly, but it's unlikely we'll have a determination before the fall, which is why we ask for the continuous till November twenty-second.
Fair enough. Does anyone have any questions on this date? I know there was, I had the question on why the November twenty-second was picked. It seems like a late fall date, but fall is fall, so. If no questions, we do have a request to continue one ninety-three high seat, High Street to November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two is their motion.
Greg Bennett here, I'll so move.
And Shagnon, I'll second that motion.
All right. We have a motion to continue this till November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two, a micro Greg Bennett, second of my Bud Shagnon. We now go to a vote. We will start with Stephen Delisle's recused. Ken Swanton.
Yes.
But Jagnon.
Yes.
Greg Bennett.
Yes.
And I also go with yes. So that's for an affirmative. This application is now continued to November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. Next item on the agenda is thirty-five High Street to request withdraw without prejudice. By Javon Alley and Noel Ockman. It's it was a special permit for non conformities, but the request to withdraw without prejudice is made because the applicant has found a by right solution. I don't know if if there's anyone on that wants to speak to that, but. And hearing none and in front of the and hearing none, there's a request to withdraw without prejudice thirty-five High Street. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Delisle, please.
Thank you. I will make a motion for the withdrawal of this application for thirty-five High Street. Number Z N C twenty-two dash three to be withdrawn without prejudice.
Second, Ken Swanton.
Right. I have a motion to withdraw our prejudice made by Mr. Delisle, second by Mr. Swanton. We go to a vote now, Mr. Delisle.
Yeah.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chagrin.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Moore is also a yes, it's five in the affirmative. The application is withdrawn without prejudice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Nice work. It was a while, I know. So our next item on the agenda tonight is for Fort Riley Avenue, Amy and Terrence Leary. Care of Lisa Mead, Lisa Mead, Talim and Costa. It is a special permit for nonconformities to construct a second story addition within the same footprint of the existing home. And at this point, at this time, why don't we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Lisa Mead, Mead Talim and Costa with me this evening figuratively someday will all be back together if these COVID waves stop. Is Amy and Terrence Leary and the architect on the project is Scott Brown and he is with us as well. This is for special permit for nonconformities for for Riley Avenue. If you go to the next slide, please, Caitlin. The Learys require a special permit to renovate and add a second story onto their ranch style home. Special permit for nonconformities is required due to the upward extension of an existing front and rear yard non conformity. And adding more than five hundred square feet of floor area onto the structure with a lot that is non conforming for frontage and area. The property is located in the R two zoning district. And was constructed around nineteen fifty-four. It is a one style ranch, as I said before. It has the following existing nonconformities, lot area of five thousand one hundred and twenty-six where ten thousand are required. Frontage of seventy-seven point fifty-eight feet where ninety feet is required. And a front yard setback of sixteen point one where twenty-five is required. And a rear yard setback of eleven where twenty-five is required. Our proposal in actually improves this rear yard setback to nineteen point six, which I'll show you in a minute. The proposal conforms to the side yard requirements, the open space and what coverage requirements. And as I will show you momentarily, also the proposal also completely complies with height requirements, which it's proposed to be at twenty-four feet. Six inches where, of course, the board knows thirty-five feet is permitted. Next slide, please. The proposal is to remove the rear porch, which then thereby improves the rear yard setback non conformity. And add a one and a half story addition on top of the existing one story structure on the property. Apart from the removal of the rear porch, the footprint of the structure will remain the same. The building height will remain under thirty-five feet, as I noted, and it will be twenty-four six. And while certainly there is an upward extension of the non conformity in the rear yard. That is improved by eight feet, six inches due to the removal of the rear yard enclosed porch. Also, the open space improves because of that removal as well. From sixty-seven percent to sixty-nine point four percent, those, of course, are both conforming. Similarly, lot coverage is reduced and made better from twenty-three percent to twenty-two point five percent. Those two are, of course, conforming, but obviously made better. Next slide, please. So here's the property of Riley Avenue, and we're going to show you some neighborhood photos here in a minute, but this is a property kind of a square lot, houses pretty much centered on the middle of the lot, a little bit more to the left here on the slider to the west. You can see the porch in the back. It's an enclosed porch that's going to be taken off, so the the rear yard will be improved. And other than that, it's going up a story and a half if the board is amenable to what we propose this evening. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Scott to review the architectural plans. I think. Scotty, you want?
Oh, yeah, sorry, at least I muted myself. So my apologies, Scott.
You give me a heart attack there. I don't know.
Yeah, and Scott Brown, the architect for the project. So Caitlin, if we could just go forward to slide six, please. Fabulous. Thank you. So so these are our proposed elevations for the project. The Learys have been living in this small house for about fifteen fifteen plus years and according to Amy Larry, they they outgrew the home two, two kids ago. Quite frankly, I don't know how they've been able to make it work for this long. It is a very tight house. And if we could just go back to slide five. Yeah, these, these are the existing condition elevations. So this is a very tight house. They have two bedrooms, very small bedrooms on the first floor. One small bathroom on the first floor and they've got a third bedroom tucked away in a corner of the basement. And so the Learys are now, you know, ready to kind of move forward with an expansion plan. And given the constraints of the lot, it only makes sense to to expand upward at, you know, to expand upward. So as part of the plan, you know, as Lisa already stated, we're removing, you know, what I call a first floor sunroom or this enclosed porch, and that is you know what we can see in the rear elevation up in the top right corner. So we're actually planning to remove that. And so I think it is actually very rare here in Newburyport that we're actually able to expand a house and reduce the footprint and thereby decrease the lot coverage. At the same time, and we're able to do that with this project. Can you just go to the next slide, please? Slide six. So again, these are the proposed elevations. And we've tried to keep the design of the house, you know, simple and somewhat cottage like. You know, the ceiling heights aren't gracious. The existing house sits very low to the ground. So by, you know, new construction standards, this isn't going to be a very tall house. We've put a shallow front porch on the front of the house for some added curb appeal. You know, I've also added some simple cottage like shutters. And these are simple enough so that, you know, Terry Larry can get his weekend carpenter groove on if he if he so chooses. We're going to be using a fiber cement board siding, you know, with a traditional exposure of four, four inches. Traditional sort of yet simple detail at the eve lines. Plan is to use sort of rot resistant materials. And I think at the end of the day, you know, this house is going to meld quite nicely with some of the other recently updated homes in the neighborhood. And I think what we are proposing here is is a reasonable expansion of what I think is currently a very small house. And I certainly hope that the board agrees with me. And with that, I will hand it back to Lisa. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott. So Scott said the Learys have lived here since two thousand and five, and they now have a family of five, which they didn't have when they bought the house and they would like to stay here. And be a little bit more comfortable with their family. So the board has to apply two criteria when issuing a special permit for nonconformities. The first criteria is, if you could just stay here for a second, Caitlin. The first criteria is whether or not there will be an addition of a new non conformity. And in this instance, as we pointed out, in fact, we're actually improving the nonconformities. We're certainly not creating any new nonconformities, albeit an upward extension of the front and rear yard setback nonconformities. So I just want to take a quick spin through the neighborhood as we go to the next. The next criteria, which is whether or not the proposed changes will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the preexisting non conforming structure. So if you could go to the next slide, please, Caitlin. So here's an overview of Riley Avenue. I'm sure many of you are familiar with it. It runs off of Marlboro Street east to west. And the Riley's are smack dab in this first block of, excuse me, the Learys are smack dab right in the first block of Riley Avenue. Next slide, please. And here are some sample houses. So this is forty-nine Marlboro Street, which is right on the corner of Riley and Marlboro. You can see three fifty-three Marlboro structure behind this house at forty-nine. Next slide, please. And here's two Riley, which is immediately adjacent to the Learys. You have a letter of support from the folks who live in this home right here. Next slide, please. And here are, here's for Riley. This is the subject matter of this application. As Scott has pointed out, it is a rather small home. Next slide, please. And here's the other side, the west side of for Riley. Next slide, please. Here's a house across the street. We also have a letter of support from five Riley, and this is directly across the street. Next slide, please. And here's another shot of five Riley from the assessor's office. Next slide. And here's six Riley. Again, this is the opposite side of the subject property, and we have a letter of support from six Riley as well. Next slide, please. And here's another shot of six Riley. Next slide, please. And we get around the street just a little bit diagonal to the Learys. This is seven Riley. Here's a, you know, more traditional two story, two story colonial. Next slide, please. And here's nine Riley, another expanded cape. You can kind of see that salt box in the rear. Next slide, please. And here's eleven Riley. This is a new home on Riley Avenue. Couple of doors down. Next slide, please. And here's ten Riley, which is a few more doors down, which is essentially a three story salt box kind of configuration. Next slide, please. And this is fifty-three Marlboro Street as seen from Riley Avenue. Next slide, please. So I think the reason I wanted to take you through the neighborhood and this board knows because you've issued permits on this street before. It's certainly an eclectic neighborhood as far as architectural style is concerned. Um, the proposed addition of our one and a half stories into a single for this onto the single story home is fitting. And a fitting addition for both the structure itself and the surrounding neighborhood. As I mentioned before, the twenty-four point six feet in height is certainly well below the thirty-five feet maximum. And you can see is not out of scale with the rest of the neighborhood. But none of the existing nonconformities are exacerbated or increased by the exist addition, except for the upward extension of the rear and front yard setback. And as I noted, the open space and lock coverage are improved as a result of the proposal. Um, you have extended capes, a couple of ranches, two story traditional colonials on the on the street as well as one other ranch. And other that salt box, three story home as well. Currently, the home is one thousand four hundred and nine square feet of living area. And as Scott indicated, that includes one bathroom. The applicants have a growing family. They have five people in their family now. They're seeking to add a couple of bedrooms and bathrooms to be a more appropriate for their family. The current living space includes the nine hundred and thirty-four square feet of the first floor and four hundred and seventy-five square feet in the basement. The addition of the second floor, of course, will double that first floor square footage to be another nine hundred and thirty-four square feet. And add an additional seventy-eight more square feet of living space in the basement. So it just kind of squares off the living space in the basement. The Learys home is the third smallest living space of all the homes on the street right now. Even after construction of the the addition is constructed. Well, the home will not be the smallest. It will by enlarge, excuse me, by no means be the largest. And will continue to fall in between. I want to fall on my sword here for a minute. When we were preparing the presentation for today. It became apparent to me that my math, and I'm going to take full responsibility for this. On the averaging on my submission to you was incorrect. The averages I gave to you were incorrect. However, it doesn't change the fact that the Learys new structure, which results in two thousand four hundred and twenty-one square feet of living space. As I said before, some of that is in the basement is neither the largest nor the smallest on the street, but somewhere in between. It's of note that the term substantially means to a greater of or significant extent. And certainly the increase in square footage and the addition of a second floor will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. Here, based upon the modest upward extension of the existing nonconformities and compatibility with the size and architectural style and design of the home. The applicant's proposal cannot be found to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. I also want to address a couple of the points that were submitted by in a butter whose home is actually located on Marlboro Street and can be seen from Riley, as I noted a little bit ago with that large dormer on the photo. First, the resident uses examples of ten Riley and five South Pond as properties which were recently permitted for renovations and reconstruction. He states that these were done through variances, which, of course, this board knows is not true. Rather, they obtained special permits, at least the one at ten Riley, which I was involved with was done with the support of all of the neighbors. And with this board. Further, the resident Marlboro Street would have the board apply a quote lot density standard of some sort. Such a dimensional standard does not exist in the city's ordinances, and therefore it cannot be applied. Board may not apply a standard that doesn't exist in the ordinances, as you well know. All this to say that the applicant does not create any new nonconformities, reduces the rear yard setback non conformity. Is not changing the footprint of this of the structure except for to make it smaller and is well under the height requirements of the ordinance. Well, I cannot represent how many other homes have converted their basements into living space in the area. What I can tell you is that the Learys have judiciously used their living, a portion of their basement is living space. Will be adding additional seventy-eight more feet of living space in their basement in addition to the compact second floor. Certainly, I hope the board can see that the Learys proposed is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure, and I would request your support for same. Thank you.
Thank you, attorney me. With that presentation complete, we will now move on to public comment. And a reminder that anyone wishing to speak, please wait till your call to bond, raise your hand electronically. And wait to be recognized, name and address, please, and be mindful of a time limit. And I will rely on Caitlin to to pull in our first comment.
Right. First up, we have Tim Smith.
Excellent.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
We can, Mr. Smith, please name an address and then go right ahead.
Sure, yeah, I'm the guy at fifty-three Marlboro that attorney needs, so. I've really pointed out. So I've known the Robbies, the the Larrys for a while, so it gives me no great pleasure to be here, but I think that I mean, the only thing I agree with from the architect and attorney need is that, you know, their house is small and I do agree with that. I you know, I offer property rights and the ability to do pretty much whatever you want on your on your property up to a certain point. And I think they've they've exceeded that that point when when Terry walked around and you know, handed out the plans. I took a look at them and, you know, I hear twenty-four point six feet. When I look at the elevations, I see I see thirty feet tall. And you know, I'm not an architect. I don't know exactly how that works, but but what I was hoping for was was maybe something similar to six Riley, which looks like it's about twenty feet tall, that's a thousand square feet. And it's a cape also similar to the forty-nine Marlboro. And I think had I seen that, I wouldn't have questioned anything, but I just think it's too much house for these small lots. And maybe there is no density ratio. And I didn't, I don't think I stayed that there was one, but I think it's something worth considering. And, you know, I think that five South Pond is an example of something that's just just gone too far. It's a it's a massive house on a tiny lot. And I think the precedent it says is detrimental to the neighborhood. And I do invite whoever makes these decisions to just stroll around and have a peek at some of these houses. And if you look at one that stands out, I think they look at five South Pond. I think that's what I'm understanding on the elevation. That's the closest. That's the closest proxy. That's pretty much the closest proxy to what the Larry's intent. And again, I can't state enough, and I don't like, I don't want to be here, but I just think it's a detrimental build into the neighborhood. And I think there's there's better options. I got a thousand square feet or so and can keep it at a level that's that just conforms more to the neighborhood. I don't think it conforms. There's a lot of new construction. I think this will be one of the tallest tallest structures. So that's, those are my thoughts. And, you know, I know those letters of support and whatnot, but it's, I think it's kind of difficult to when someone comes to your house, sometimes to say no. And, you know, it was wasn't easy for me to to say no. But I think that's that's where I am. I disagree with it. You know, I disagree. That does fit with with the neighborhood. And I do invite folks to come down and have a look and obviously, you know, prefer whatever's excuse me, whatever's agreeing on. And, you know, I think that about that about covers it. I am curious on the twenty-four point six feet because I might not get the elevation. I do see thirty feet, and that's a good ten feet taller than the six Riley of thirty-three percent taller, I believe. So it's a considerable difference. And I think it's taller than the prop is across the street that all have pretty large yards. I mean, my, I think my house is thirty feet maybe. But my lot is probably three or four times larger. And I think when you go and and you put these you know, these high density houses in these small lots, it does take away from the neighborhood. I mean, then you have to wonder where where does it really stop? And, you know, ten years on the line, somebody might as well, you know, how did this happen? How do these things happen? I think this is, this is how it happens. Unfortunately, you know, you have a essentially this would confirm a precedent initially set by five South Palm, and I think that was not a particularly. I think it was a detriment. I think it was a detrimental precedent, uh, I think that's about all I have to say, um. Can people hear me, I, I don't.
We can hear loud and clear, and, and I will recognize that, um. It, it's been on the website, your, you know, your detailed letter and analysis was received by the board, and, and we've seen it also.
And I will say quickly, the two, that, that was, that was done, you know, when, when a house next door was put on the market, and I, I was thinking, oh, they're going to try to stuff. You know, develop or buy that particular property and try to put a five South Pond Street style home there, so it was. You know, and I said, oh, but then, you know, like I say in the letter, if you've read it refreshment, you know, young couple bond, I think that was great, because you just don't see that. Um, so I was super happy to see that, but I just think it's too, it's just too much house, and I think, um. You know, that's, I guess I'm a voice in the wilderness, but uh, you know, th- those are, those are my thoughts, and um.
Alright.
And uh, I guess that's, that's where I leave it, and the rest is up to you folks, whoever makes the decisions.
That will be us for sure, um, but, but, but I thank you for your, for your input, uh, Mr. Smith. Okay, and is there anyone else that would like to comment?
Not seeing any new hands at this time, Chair.
Give a second for someone with a slow trigger finger to hit the. Hand raised. Three, two, one. Hearing and seeing of no other commenters, uh, we'll move on to questions from the board. And with that, we'll start with uh, Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could just go back to um. Attorney Need for a moment. I think Attorney Need, the, the existing square footage of the house is one thousand four hundred and nine square feet. And the proposal would be for two thousand four hundred and twenty-one square feet, do I have that right?
That, that is correct, um, so the, do you want the breakdown by floor or are you set?
Oh, that's okay, I, I think I have that, I understand that, I just want to make sure I have the totals correct, thank you. Question for uh, Mr. Brown. If I could go back to your um, statement regarding the, the ceiling heights inside. Could you just, I, I, I know that it says, it shows it on your plan, but it's, the, the numbers are too small for me to see it. Um, I'm wondering if you could just tell me what the, what the ceiling heights are.
Yeah, certainly, if we can just go back to the previous page, you know, uh. Yeah, so when we could zoom in there on. There we go, so right now, the existing first floor finished ceiling is seven foot, seven and a half inches. And in our next sheet, you know, actually what we're proposing is, uh, we're showing a dimension of eight foot. Um, but the reality is that uh, we're not going to be able to do that, and what we've done here is uh. The way that we've designed this is that we've left a little bit of an allowance here because. Uh, the plan is to take the existing roof off, and once we do that, we're going to evaluate how we're going to. Um, uh, deal with the uh, the new floor framing. So what we've done here is we've left a little bit of extra dimension. With that eight-foot finished ceiling height, uh, to allow for a different kind of structure, so it was more than likely we're gonna. Uh, roll with the existing first floor ceiling height of seven foot, you know, seven and a half inches. And on the second floor, we're going with sort of a very standard ceiling height of, of around eight foot, you know, which is um. You know, pretty standard for uh, a new construction, uh, ceiling height on, on a second floor.
Okay, uh, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, and well, yeah, one, one other thing, while, while we're looking at this relative to building height, so. You know, as we all know, uh, here in Newburyport, we measure building height from, from average grade. You know, to mean roof height, and that's what the application represents, so that's where. You know, to, to Mr. Smith's, you know, question, that's where the twenty-four feet, six inches comes from. But you know, we have another dimension here that we're showing, uh, this building. Uh, from average grade to the approximate ridge height, and that's actually closer to, looks like it's uh, twenty-four, twenty-nine feet. You know, almost five inches, you know, so that's where he's getting the um. You know, the thirty-foot dimension. And uh, while we're on the subject of um, building height, if we could just take a look at. You know, what, what slide, um. Which slide Lisa shows like the two houses across the street, eleven and.
There, uh, right, that brought the sixteen, number sixteen. There we go, there's seven Riley. And then there's that other, is that the.
Yeah, so this, this, um, you know, this is a newer house, it's built in, you know, built in the eighties, and, and you can see that it sits up. Um, much higher off the ground than the Leary's, so I think what I'm seeing here is that. Um, from, from grade to the ridge height, I believe this to be slightly taller than what we're proposing to do with the Leary's. And the house immediately to the left of this, uh, which is what, slide thirteen? Yeah, this is directly across, it's a little hard to tell, because it's got a different, you know, different. Uh, roof line, and if we were to measure this, you know, how we measure, you know, roof heights in, in Newburyport, you know, it would. Um, because it's the median roof height from the eve to the ridge. You know, this would, you know, technically be a lot lower than, than the Leary's, but if we were to measure this from grade. To the highest point, again, I, I think that this is very close. You know, to what we're proposing to do with the Leary's, so, you know, I think the two houses uh, that are across the street are good comps. Uh, in terms of, of building height, in terms of um, uh, comparing it to what, what we're planning to do.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Brad, I have just a couple more questions for you. Uh, with, with regard to the windows in the Leary's house, um, could you uh? Speak to that.
Yeah, so the plan is to do a clad, you know, a simulated divided light, light window. Uh, we have um, not identified the manufacturer yet, and a lot of that has to do with um. Uh, you know, fluctuating lead times and, and costs, but uh, the plan is to do sort of a high-quality. You know, clad wood window with a simulated divided light.
Uh, and then finally, on the, on the right elevation, um, that chimney-looking thing, is, you, did you explain that?
Yeah, so uh, the Leary's uh, have a wood burning fireplace, you know, in, in the basement. And um, and they plan to continue the use of that, so. Uh, and we can actually see, you know, the sort of stainless steel flew in one of the pictures of the existing house, and. You know, so the plan is just to sort of continue the use of that, and we're going to need to extend that above, you know, above the roof line.
Sure, okay, that's good, uh, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Chairman, those are my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle, we'll move on to Mr. Swanton.
Uh, yeah, thank you, um, hey, the question of height has come up a lot here as the, one of the primary objections from the person who raised some objections. Um, you know, one of the requirements of an application is you have to, you have to file. A matrix, a zoning matrix showing all the dimensions and one of which is height, I couldn't find it, do you, do you? You, did you guys ever file a zoning matrix, could you put that up, please, uh, Caitlin, the zoning matrix?
It, it would be on the site plan.
Okay.
Caitlin. Um, so Mr. uh, Swan, sometimes the height is on the architectural plans, and sometimes the height is on the zoning matrix on the um, site plan. In this instance, there's a zoning matrix on the site plan, and then the height is on the architectural plans.
I, I mean, quite frankly, I've never seen. In my years on the board, a zoning matrix that did not include height. Uh, this one, this one doesn't, I would appreciate it if you would not do this in the future. Um, but just to fill it in for the moment, uh, if I look at the plan, the existing height. I guess I have to look at another plan, and the current, the proposed height is twenty-four and not six, I think. And the required height is thirty-five, I'm just trying to make sure I understand this stuff.
Sure, so the um, the proposed height is twenty-four feet, six inches.
Yep.
The required height, of course, is thirty-five, as you know, and the existing structure is twelve feet, eight and a half inches.
Okay. You know, it may be a small thing, but I really think that zoning matrix is really important for us to always see. I'd really appreciate in the future if you'd make sure you always had the zoning matrix included, so we not to go through this. Um. You know, I mean, I go down that street, I realize this is, quite frankly, one of the, probably the smallest house on the street. So I understand the owner's desire to increase the size of the house, I'm not surprised, um. The, I guess the objection that's been raised by the one person we heard from is the height. Um. And uh, he had an interesting chart in his uh, letter. It showed the square footage. And this, the uh, of the lots and the square footage of the buildings, it reminded me of being on Plum Island where that actually is a requirement. As you all know, that's not a requirement here, uh, in, in the mainland portion of Newburyport. Uh, but it is interesting, uh, I guess my question to you, uh. Attorney Need is, would this be the highest building on the street?
Um, Mr. uh, Swan, and I don't, you know, we haven't measured every building on the street. I suspect that the um, Colonial that we just showed you is, and then in addition, um. Uh, Caitlin, if you could scroll down to the um, kind of the three-story saltbox. Um, that is there, uh, well, but the eighteen and nineteen. So there's eighteen, that's the, the new one that's being built down the street, and then nineteen. You can see nineteen, you see that is a three-story house, it's kind of misleading because of the slope of the front roof there.
Yep.
But you can see that, so no, it won't, it certainly will not be the tallest. House on the street, and I, you know, I haven't measured them all, but I think Scott pointed out the measurements earlier.
The thing I wonder about is, it is a, you know, we have to. A- as, as has been pointed out, the thirty-five. You know, the city has a. A law that has to be below thirty-five feet, and this is clearly at twenty-four, nine, the way these are measured, it's way below thirty-five feet. So, so the more pertinent question is, you know, for this particular street, is the massing out of line? Um, and you know, if you consider the lot size, I understand the applicant was, I mean, the uh, the butter that complained. Was concerned about, you know, this, it, it is true, this is one of the smallest slots on the street, and it will have a tall roof. But it's a, it's, I guess. I guess what I'm struggling with is, is that's really not in our zoning code to consider, you know, outside of Plum Island, to consider the size of your lot. Um, so at this point, I guess I don't have any more questions, thank you for addressing mine.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Swan, uh, Mr. Chagrin.
Chair, I've got no questions, anything I had has been asked and answered, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet.
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Um, yeah, I think everyone was, uh, my first colleagues were very thorough, so I also uh, have no further questions. So with uh, questions being exhausted, we'll close that portion of the hearing, move on to deliberations. Remember, this is special permit for non-conformities, so we will be couching our discussions and reasoning around uh. The hurdles that must be met for that, and I will start with uh, Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, um, so for the special permit for non-conformities, we need to uh. To determine that there is no, the addition of, no, there is not the addition of a new non-conformity. And in this case, I think that that's clear, there would not be a new non-conformity here. And secondly, is it substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, uh, the proposed um. Uh, reconstruction of the house. And that's sort of where the, the rubber meets the road here, we can consider such things as massing, um. Uh, the scope and scale of the, of the proposed structure, and I think that's where we all are here. And I think that in walking down the street and in looking at the uh, the photos that Attorney Need has walked us through. Um. With respect to the, the housing stock on the street, I think it is, it is pretty clear that we do have. Um. A neighborhood in which there is mixed housing stock. Uh, we have some small houses on, on Riley, and we have some large houses on Riley, and certainly. I take the point that the, the larger houses are, are newer houses. Um. But that, that being the case, we do have sort of mixed housing stock there. Um. The other thing that, that really strikes me about this particular um, proposal is that we are. Looking at the existing footprint of the structure, and there's not really too much variance from the existing footprint. Uh, and what variance there is. We, we understand from the application that it's getting smaller, not, not larger. So, we, we have our open space and our lot coverage requirements that are. That are conforming even with the uh, the back sun porch on the, on the structure as it is currently. And those are becoming even better or more conforming, I don't know if more conforming is a, is a concept, but they are. Uh, trending in the right way, not in the wrong way, so I think that this is certainly, um. The proposal does appear to be, you know, on the taller side, but it comes in. Under the, under the requirement uh, of the zoning code in terms of height, and. It is on a street where the housing stock is mixed, where you have some tall houses and some small houses, so I think, given that, I, I don't. I don't see how this is more detrimental to the neighborhood, and I, I can support this application.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Delisle, uh, Mr. Swan.
Uh, well, I, I, I think Mr. Delisle has said it well, I, I would only add that the fact that the butters. On both sides and across are in support of it also adds to the uh, weight of the proposal. Um. I, you know, I, I think the one objection we had, you know, this is not Plum Island, you can't consider the fact this is a very small acreage lot. You have to look at the height of this building relative to the rest of the street. I don't see this being that out of line, so I too can support this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Swan, Mr. Chagrin.
Uh, thank you, Chair, I have to agree with my colleagues, and uh, I'd also comment that the uh. The one a butter that seems to have a problem with the building height, and looking at his house, uh. I would say it's a similar height, it's certainly a two-story with a similar pitched roof. Um, it's got to be pretty darn close to uh, the same mean, mean height, so. And, and again, comparing it to some of the other houses in the neighborhood, specifically the larger homes across the street, I didn't think the height was out of line. Uh, with all that said, I can support the application.
Thank you, Mr. Chagrin, Mr. Bennet.
Yeah, I would agree, I, I don't want to repeat particularly what Mr. Delisle said, but at first I would like to uh. Uh, I, I want to thank Mr. Smith for his comments and observations, and uh. Uh, although I, I don't agree, I, I, I will say one thing, and that is that. You've requested that the board provide you with our criteria and our thinking and, and the, and the metrics that we use here, and I trust that. Uh. You have received those from uh, Mr. Delisle and others, and I'll try to add my own uh, comments on that. Um. As Mr. Delisle and others have said, uh, this is a two-pronged analysis for this request for a special exception. The first prong in the analysis is to determine whether or not there's a new non-conformity here, the answer to that is no. So then we go to the more uh, challenging uh, uh, criteria, and that is whether there. This application constitutes a, would be substantially more detrimental. Uh, both to the neighborhood, uh, and as it relates to the structure on this lot itself. Um, and that has some nature of a subjective analysis, but we're guided by notions of massing and scale. Size and the like, so when I, I do this in two ways, I've looked at the lot. And I've looked at the criteria the zoning board has set here in terms of, of criteria such as size and massing. Uh, and lot, and I note that uh, two important things in my mind, first, both open space and lot coverage here. Will be reduced, secondly, the request uh, on the height will be well below the requirement, so. Uh, I do not, and, and thirdly, uh, the house, the house there presently is quite modest in size, and I. Find that a house of some twenty-four hundred square feet hardly strikes me as being uh, out of character for the lot. So I then turn my attention to the neighborhood, and as my colleagues has observed. Uh, have observed, uh, the houses and, and the applicant has submitted here, the homes across the street. And in the immediate neighborhood seem to be uh. Certainly as large and maybe larger, but certainly not demonstrably. Certainly as large and maybe larger, but certainly not demonstrably sp- smaller by any way, shape or form in terms of height. So I conclude that the. In terms of size, massing, scale and height. That this request is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So for those reasons, I, I support this application. I also note the support. For the application by the neighbors and. For all these reasons and for those articulated by my colleagues, I support the application.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bennet. And. I mean, the board has said it better than I could wrap this up, so I too support for the reasons that were. That were described, starting with Mr. Delisle, right down, right down the line and then, and really wrapped up nicely by, by Mr. Bennet. So for all those reasons, I can also support this. So with that, I will close deliberations and be looking for a motion.
Yes, Mr. Bennet, Greg Bennet, I'll move that the application forty Riley Street for special permit. For non-comportanties, for non-conformities, application twenty-two dash eleven be approved.
I'll second it. Mr. Shagnon.
Right, we have a motion to approve made by Mr. Bennet, second by Mr. Chagrin. Now goes to a vote. Mr. Delisle.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think that in the. In the notes from the planning office that they indicated that this. Application did trigger the tree and sidewalk ordinance, so I would. Raise that to your attention.
I appreciate that. Yes, it, it, the, the notes did say that, and the normal attachment will be made to the decision that they will abide with the. If any decisions made by department with that regard, but thank you, Mr. Delisle. So with that added. Note. We will go to a vote. And again, start with Mr. Delisle.
Yeah.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chagrin.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
I am also, yes, that's all five in the affirmative, the application is approved.
Thank you very much, Chair and the board.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is four twenty-one Oak Street. O. Simon Panal, I hope I pronounced it properly, special permit on conformities to add ten feet to the back of an existing attached garage on the east side of the property and to add a second floor to be used as a woodshop. This would extend an existing non-conformity on the eastern property line. Where the garage is seven point one feet off the property line instead of the ten. Will also include an addition of a second floor over the existing connection. To include a bathroom in a small office. That said, we will hear from the applicant.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
I'm on my wife's computer, so I got her name up there.
Not a bad thing.
Nope. So, um, so this is the proposal. As you can see, I'm seven point one feet off the property line. I propose to add ten feet to the back of the garage. Mostly because twenty-four by twenty-four is not really big enough to be able to, for a woodshop. Especially to rip, you know, dimensional lumber sixteen feet long, things like that. Over thirty-two feet is good. So that's the proposal. Want to move on to the next slide? Or the next, yeah. Existing floor. So that's just the proposal to have a, basically a loser garage bay, it'll become a project space for me, still have a bay for my. Wife to park in with some workshop space on the first floor. Next slide. That's an existing second floor. The new second floor, you can see, we'll just have a, have room coming up and a bathroom on the house side to keep it. Help keep it warm, so we don't pipes freeze. Next slide is. Existing elevations. As you can see right now, I believe I've got a six pitch on my garage roof, my house right now has a ten pitch. So if you go to the next slide. Basically, I'd just be adding the same kind of. Same kind of design as with the rest of the house. Basically just adding a ten pitch to the roof of the garage and a small knee wall so that. When I add the four pitch dormers, I end up with. An eight foot head height at the, at the edge wall. And kind of doing minimal windows in it. Next slide. Next slide, let's see, existing. From the back, I've got an existing door that I'm just going to move out into the new shop. It's a sliding barn door style. And. As you can see, my elevation for the garage is going to be lower than my, than the main picture of my house, both for aesthetic reason and just to avoid some. Huge massing on the property, want to try to avoid that. And then the last three slides are existing pictures of the house. That's the existing garage right now. And to give you an idea of what it looks like with the house now. And that's the back is the last slide. Obviously, I painted the front and the side, and I've done nothing to the rear of the, rear of the structure. So that's, that's the proposal as it stands. Any questions? I'd be happy to field.
Okay. Thank you very much to Mr. Panal. I, I assume I pronounced it correctly?
Yeah, it's panel.
Panel. Close but no cigar for me, but I'll get it. Thank you very much. So with that, we will move on to see if there's any public comment. Anyone attending tonight that wishes to comment on this application, please raise your hand electronically and be recognized.
Not seeing any hands at this time, Chair.
Fair enough. Here's the customary three, two, one. All right, we will close, seeing no hands, we will close public comment. And move on to questions from the board, once again, starting with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It, it looks from the, from this. This illustration in particular that the. The existing ridge height of the garage doesn't change. Is that? Correct or is that not correct?
That's not correct. The, the ridge height of the garage right now is, it's on another. I, it's on another.
Oh, yeah.
Other slide. Yeah, the, the, yeah, the ridge height right now is twenty-three, five, and the new ridge height will be. Twenty. Twenty-one, four? That doesn't make sense. Oh, no, right now the ridge height is fourteen foot nine, and the new ridge height will be twenty-one, four.
Okay. Okay. Okay, and then. Would, could you explain the, the increase in the square footage?
The increase in the square footage?
Yeah. That you're adding with the, the second, the second story over the garage.
Yeah, let me just go, let me find my zoning matrix. I don't, it wasn't, I didn't, I didn't put together the PDF, but I will pull it up on my phone right now. Oh, it's not in there. Okay, so the, the existing, the existing is, I mean, right now it's twenty-four by twenty-four. So it's five hundred and seventy-six square feet, and then adding on ten by twenty-four will add another. Two hundred and forty square feet on the bottom floor, and then the second floor will be. Eight hundred and sixteen square feet plus, I believe it's ten by twelve, so another one hundred and twenty square feet, so it'll be nine. Nine thirty-six on the second floor.
Okay, so nine thirty-six on the second floor and then two seventy on the first floor. Right. Okay. And then with respect to the, the material, the exterior, that'll just carry along with the, the slabboard look of the house.
Yep, it's, right now it's hardy plank, so it's a fiber cement. Siding, and I'll continue that onto the garage along with, you know, with. I've got vinyl or PVC trim boards, so I'll continue that onto the garage.
Okay, thank you, though. That's it for my question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swan.
Yeah, I mean. The zoning matrix showed that you, you have a very large backyard there, right? I mean, I mean, I realize you're extending the garage back ten feet, but. You own a lot of land behind your house, right?
That's correct. I have a third of an acre.
Yeah. Yeah, so that kind of shows that there's, you know, we don't usually see this, you know, in this neighborhood, a hundred and fifty-four feet. So that little ten feet going backwards to me is kind of small. So, and I got to tell you, I just, well, I'll just leave it there, wait for my commentary. But I have no other questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. Mr. Chagrin.
I have no other questions, again, asked by the rest of the team, and thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Bennet.
I have just one, can, can you describe again what? What is? On the second floor of the proposed structure? Above the garage?
It'll be a woodshop. I'm a carpenter by trade. So I'm adding a woodshop onto my house.
Oh, I got, so the woodshop is on the second floor, not on the basement?
Right, it'll be the second floor of the garage.
I got you. Thanks for that clarification. I guess I wasn't reading these very. Artfully. I have no other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. I, I don't have any further questions and asked and answered, so. We'll close questions from the board and move on to deliberations. Again, special permit for non-conformities, we will couch our discussion. Around the, the criteria and start again with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. So in looking at the criteria, the first prong is the absence of a new non-conformity, and I think that that is clear here, there is no. New non-conformity being created. And second is that it, it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And it doesn't, this, although a fairly large increase to the, to the overall. Size of the garage, it doesn't seem that this is out of. Out of scale relative to the size of the lot and, and the, the other buildings in the neighborhood. So I think. For those reasons, I can support this application.
Very good. Thanks, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swan, now you get the chance.
Yeah, no, I think Mr. Delisle said it really well. I, I just wanted to add that. I, I appreciate your courage to come to us without a lawyer and present your plan. You know, you have a big lot there, you're going ten feet backwards. And putting a second floor to have a woodshop. I mean, I think that's, I don't see that as being more detrimental. And I, I appreciate your courage, so. I can support this application.
Thank you, Mr. Swan.
I just want to say, by the way, not to cast any aspersions on the wonderful lawyers who do present to us. I just, I just, I just think, you know, I hear from some people that, oh, you got to hire a lawyer, you're going to the zoning board of appeals. Not necessarily. Here's a good example. So anyway, I can support this. Thank you.
Excellent. Nice addendum. Mr. Chagrin.
I, I agree. Good save, Mr. Swan. I, I can also support the proposal. Kudos to, to the owner. I think you did a great job with your presentation and your drawings and. It's, it is a substantial increase, but I, I don't think it's more detrimental to the neighborhood and. The fact that you have so much room in the back is, is a plus. So again, I can support the, the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chagrin. Mr. Bennet.
I agree. I find that the application does not pose a. Substantial detriment to the neighborhood, so. I would approve it. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Bennet. And for all the reasons my colleagues explained, I, I can't find any way this. Modus expansion back and certainly it's a meaningful move upwards over the garage attached to the house, but. I, I don't see any way. From, from respect to size scale massing that this is substantially more detrimental than, than the previous building. And again, I, I also would, would. Give kudos to. To the presenter, to the owner. So thank you for that, and I can support this. So with that, I'll close deliberations and we will look for a motion.
I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the. Special permit for non-conformities for. Twenty-one Oak Street. Application number D N C dash twenty-two dash twelve.
Second, Ken Swanton.
Motion to approve made by Mr. Delisle, seconded by Mr. Swanton. So we will now go to a vote, starting with Mr. Delisle.
Yeah.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chagrin.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
I'm also, yes, that's all in the affirmative, the application is approved.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Panal. I want to get it right before we get one away. So now we're just going to stray a little bit down the street for our next application, and this will be ten Oak Street. Windward Strile, Windward Shaw LLC, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Talaman Acosta. Construct a single-story one hundred and eighty-square-foot addition at the rear of the non-conforming structure on the non-conforming lot. This is a special permit request. And we will now hear from the applicant.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I just want to digress for a moment. So to Mr. Swanton's point, let me give you a, a little history. So Simon, who you just heard from. His late father was a boatwright, and Simon is underselling his carpentry skills as well as his obvious. Skills at presenting an application, just to give myself a little age, I was honored to be at Simon's Eagle Penning. When he received his Eagle Scout Award a, a number of years ago, too many to recount, but. It's great to see him making an addition on the house so he can continue his. Really superb carpentry skills, which I believe he learned at the knee of his father.
Thanks, Lisa.
You're welcome, Simon.
Excellent. Well, thank you. With that said, I mean, it was already approved, I didn't even need that, but you know.
I know, but I, I couldn't resist. So with that, let's do go down Oak Street just a little bit, actually around the corner, because as many of you may know, or who visited where the Panals live. It's actually a turn in Oak Street, but we go to Oak Street closer to Marlborough Street for ten Oak Street. And this evening, the applicant is Windward Shaw. Construction and the owners of this property are Amy and Richard Lyman. And with me this evening again, of course, is Scott Brown. Who is the architect on this house. This is a request for special permit for non-conformities. If you could go to the next slide, please. The house is located at ten Oak Street in the R two zoning district in the D C O D overlay district. We're proposing to construct a small one hundred and eighty-square-foot one-story addition. On a space that's in the southeast corner of the property, which we're going to hear, excuse me, the house, which currently has a deck. This is a single-family home on the property. The front portion of the home was constructed around eighteen eighty-five, according to the district data sheets in nineteen oh five, according to the assessors' records. It is listed as contributory on the district data sheets. The property includes sixty-six feet of frontage where ninety is required for a single-family home. The front yard setback is six point three eight feet where twenty-five feet is required. And the right yard setback is at four, five, four feet, five inches where ten feet is required. The property meets the area requirements and includes eleven thousand five hundred thirty square feet of area. Where ten thousand square feet is required, and it meets all other dimensional requirements. The applicant is proposing to renew nine point two percent of the existing exterior walls. And therefore it does not trigger the D C O D special permit requirements. Next slide, please. And the reason that we are here is that even though we are only constructing a hundred and squirty, one hundred and eighty-square-foot addition on the rear of the structure. Because there was reconstruction of this property a few years ago, you do a cumulative addition, and so that triggers the five hundred. Feet total, triggering the special permit requirement, so that's why we're here. So with that, if you can go to the next slide, please. So here is the site plan. And you can see where the existing conditions are. The house obviously sits long on this very long lot. And Scott has marked on this plan where the new one-story addition. uh, where the new one-story addition is in the back right-hand corner, and with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Scott to review the architectural plans.
Great, thank you, Lisa, um, Caitlin, if we could just slide forward to slide seven. Yeah, that'd be a good place to start, so this is an existing condition, uh, photo taken uh, from the back left corner and you can see there, off to the right is the driveway and uh, it is this wood deck, uh, where we are planning to put this one-story addition. And uh, this project, this addition is, is less about, you know, adding square footage and more about improving the functionality in the layout of the back of the house. And what we're planning to put here is, is the dining area, which is currently uh, located uh, on the first floor to the, to the left of this deck here, uh, so it'll be a one-story addition, it'll have a low slope roof and it's in large part due to, trying to um, not impact uh, any of the windows in the second floor, so those two windows uh, at the second floor, facing the driveway, uh, we are trying to keep those intact. And uh, off to the left here, right where those Adirondack chairs are, uh, we're planning to put a uh, a new deck area. And uh, I think this is sort of, uh, I saw this written somewhere, but um, you know, that deck uh, is gonna be less than thirty inches, off to the ground, uh, much like that existing deck that we're seeing there, so um, that doesn't uh, need to meet any sort of uh, dimensional, uh, criteria, uh, so if we can go back one slide to slide six. So these, these are our proposed elevations, uh, on the, on the top there, this is the left side elevation of the house, you know, as we would see it, uh, standing in the driveway, looking back to the house, in this small addition, we're, we're, you know, putting in the back uh, left corner where you see all of those notes and, you know, for a little left, you can see our new deck that we're, are proposing to put there, uh, planning to put a couple of skylights, you know, on the roof there, and uh, try to make a feature of this uh, inside the dining area. And uh, the rear elevation is, you know, in the lower right-hand corner of this sheet, uh, planning on putting, you know, kind of a rather large biparting sliding door, so this, you know, new space can kind of open up or the existing space can kind of open up into the backyard and, off to the right there, that's, that's our, you know, our, our small one-story addition. Uh, planning to reuse some of the windows that are already there, you know, and uh, I think we only need two, two new windows for this project and um, pretty much planning to, you know, match all of the existing materials that are there, house is fiber cement, so we're planning to, this new addition will also be uh, fiber cement as well, so uh, I think this is a pretty simple project, uh, it's a very small addition and uh, I hope that uh, uh, the board will uh, like this, thank you.
Thank you, Scott, um, so if you could slide on down, Caitlin, you can see the photo as Scott said of the um, existing conditions where it's gonna go and the next slide, it just gives you an idea of where the house is located and the addition's gonna go right underneath where that four is in twenty-four. And the next slide, please, so the criteria the board needs to apply is whether or not uh, there is any new uh, non-conformity created and here there is not. In fact, uh, the addition doesn't intensify, exacerbate or extend any existing non-conformities. Uh, the next is whether or not the proposed change will be substantially uh, more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conforming structure. Here, um, we think the applicant um, is of the position that the proposed modification is very small, a hundred and eighty square feet, and will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. The addition is being constructed over an existing deck in the back southeast corner of the structure, there's no impact on any of the non-conformities and is fully compliant with all dimension requirements of the ordinance. It's sympathetic to the architectural style of the existing structure and certainly is only minimally visible from Oak Street, um, from the sidewalk on Oak Street as it's tucked behind the existing side porch. Further, it has no impact on the rear of the home as there's a garage on the site which blocks the view from the rear neighbor. The proposed addition is also thirty-one and a half feet away from the lot line to the east and therefore has little to no impact on the neighbor to the east. For all of those reasons, uh, we request the board approve this um, as not being substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, thank you.
Very good, thank you, attorney me. Uh, with the uh, presentation complete, we'll close that portion uh, and head to public comment. At this time, if anyone would like to comment on this application, please raise your hand electronically, guessing there's gonna be a no, but.
Not seeing any hands at this time, Chair.
Remember, participants have declined, so I'm not surprised, um, so with that, we will close a public comment portion of the hearing and move on to, questions from the board, starting with Mr. Delisle.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I have no questions regarding the project.
Excellent, move on to Mr. Swan. Who is muted?
He is muted, I, I am now unmuted, no, I, I, I think our crack legal team and the architect have done a nice job with this, uh, I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Swan, nice save, uh, Mr. Chagrin?
I have to agree with Mr. Swan, it's, it's nice to have a lawyer do the presentation yet again, um, no questions.
Excellent, uh, Mr. Bennet?
No questions here.
Very good, um, I also have no questions and I can't add any more than it's been added by everyone else and accolades, so we'll move on. Um, so with no questions uh, from, from the board right now, we move on to deliberations and once again, special permit for non-conformities. So we will couch our discussion, explanation, deliberation around that, and again, start with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, I would again, um, state that here with respect to this proposal, there is no new non-conformity being proposed and as to uh, the second prong of our uh, of our criteria, um, this, this proposal does not seem to be uh, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, uh, owing to it, the, the modest size of the, of the single-story addition, um, that is proposed and how it, how it is going to fit into the uh, the existing, the existing space or existing deck space. Um, I, I just don't see this as being substantially more detrimental to the, to the neighborhood, um, also owing to the fact that um, it won't really be very visible from, from the street, seems like this is a, a good project that should uh, that should go forward and I can support this project.
All right, thank you, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Swan.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I think Mr. Lyle has said it well, I'd like to also add that I'm very sorry that our chair, uh, although I think our vice chair is doing a great job tonight, I'm sad our chair wasn't here tonight, because he's really big in the Eagle Scout program. And I think he would have appreciated the earlier comment, I, I too have been involved in that program. Um, no, seriously, I think Mr. Delisle said it really well, this is really minor, you can't see it from the street, I have no issue with this, I can support this program.
Excellent, Mr. Chagrin?
I agree with the comments by my previous two colleagues, um, I, I, again, a nice modest uh, addition, uh, certainly not more detrimental to the neighborhood and I can support it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chagrin, Mr. Bennet?
I concur with my colleagues, they've said it well.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet, and although I never made it out of Cub Scouts, I do concur with my colleagues and it's a modest proposal and I can support it. So that said, I will close deliberations and look for a motion.
Uh, this, this is Mr. Shag and I'll make a motion to approve uh, the application for Ten Oak Street. It's uh, for a special permit for non-conformity, Z N C twenty-two dash fourteen.
Second, Ken Swanton.
Motion to approve made by Mr. Chagrin, second by Mr. Swanton, we go to a vote, uh, Mr. Delisle.
Yeah.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chagrin?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
I am also, yes, that's all five in the affirmative, the application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, attorney.
Good evening.
You too. Uh, with that, um, that concludes the public hearings for tonight, um, and we will close that portion and move on to our business meeting, which starts off, first and foremost, with approval of the minutes of April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two.
I move we approve them, Ken Swanton.
Second that, even Delisle.
Motion to approve the minutes, maybe by, by one, second by Mr. Delisle, go to a vote, uh, Mr. Delisle?
Yeah.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chagrin?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
I am also, yes, that's all five, uh, the, uh, the minutes of the twenty-sixth are approved. Uh, Caitlin, other than uh, health updates of the office, do we have any other updates from uh? All right, well, you made it, well done, uh, at that point, that concludes the uh, the business meeting and uh, all that's left is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Who, who mumbled that, I couldn't tell?
Oh, Mr. Delisle mumbled that.
Thank you.
I, I didn't think I mumbled it, but.
I didn't have my eyes up, so I couldn't see.
I'll second it, Mr. Shaggin.
We have a uh, a well-enunciated uh, motion to adjourn made by Mr. Delisle, second by Mr. Chagrin, uh, voice, uh, a voice vote here all, uh, in approval?
Aye.
Aye.
You're against, no, we are adjourned, motion to adjourn is approved, all right, everyone, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Take care, everyone.
Good night.
Bye.
Caitlin, feel better.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.